Welcome everyone, I'm not calling this meeting to order, please stand with us, we'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman at large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight and we're thankful, we're thankful that we serve a God who's gracious and loving, who cares about his people, and Lord, we thank you that you're a God that we can come to with our problems and our issues, and that you love us. Lord, we pray that you would be with us tonight in the meeting, Lord, and give us wisdom and knowledge to handle things the way that you would have us to handle things in Christ, and we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of amendments for two meetings, one on August 2nd, and another was a special meeting, which is a budget workshop on August 4th. Should we move?
Second.
We have motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for premium hazard pay for first responders due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Nick Manley, City Attorney.
Yeah, this resolution will allow for, or was approved earlier in the year for the extra COVID funds the state had, allow for reimbursement and or just payment to first responders through the state COVID funds. So it'll allow for an additional $1,000 for each certified police officer and firefighter who was working within the state on July 1, and then also, it'll also allow for the EMTs to be reimbursed or paid $1,000 as well based off of, from city pay, because that did not make it into the actual bill. My understanding was there was another bill for EMTs, but had maybe a higher amount and didn't get through. So the city tonight will be authorizing payment of $1,000 to each, an extra $1,000 to each firefighter and a police officer that will be reimbursed to the state along with $1,000 for our EMTs to be fair to everyone involved with the COVID situation for those funds through the state. So tonight we need authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution, and then we'll start the process of filing their payment with the state and training the department for that approval for the funds.
I'll make that motion.
For second.
We have motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for an emergency purchase by our Parks Department.
This is ratifying expenditures during the baseball tournaments, we had, I think it was one day it was approximately 130 degrees on the actual turf in July, and so there were fans that were ordered to help keep everyone cool and those attendees and players, so it's a need for ratification, an amount of $7,653.80 for all the fans that were purchased for that day and that weekend.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to provide ARPA funds to the Horn Lake Creek Interceptor Sewer District.
Yeah, this resolution, as we discussed in the past, obviously the city receives ARPA funds, pretty many of those funds are going to be allocated for the Horn Lake Creek, Horn Lake Creek Interceptor Sewer District to authorize for needs needed for sewer, as they treat majority of the sewer within the city. So it's part of the money that the Horn Lake Creek Interceptor Sewer District receiving, they're going to leverage that money to apply for money from MDEQ. MDEQ's requiring an actual note, I mean actual resolution and a letter from the city showing that we will be authorizing pretty many of our dollars to be allocated toward the district for those sewer needs the city faces in the next couple of years. And I think this will be used for the storage tank, which will be helped, which will be needed for the inflow infiltration issues with the sewer or south end. So tonight just authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution for that official approval of the board for the money for the ARPA purposes at the Horn Lake Creek Interceptor Sewer District.
Should we move?
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is authorization to approve the school resource, school resource officer program MOU with the Sota County Schools.
Yes, sir. This resolution, obviously the mayor's talked about this in the past, been met with the school districts and the county. This resolution will continue the relationship we have of providing SROs that the city provided for many, many years. But this will also note that the city will, in the past, have provided $103,000 annually in the school district, this will up into $600,000, or $60,000 per school, for five schools, to be $300,000 that the city will be allocated for funds for SROs that we provide, the city provides, and also that allows for the chief to be in charge of those officers, they're not employees of the school district, they're still employees of the South Haven Police Department, but it then provides the, that sort of, that relationship along with authorizing the school district to pay the city those funds for us providing resource officers that are needed for the South Haven schools.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Kelly, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is authorization of award for the fire extension phase three project.
Yeah, this went to bid, was sibling overseeing it, and the low bid was from Trade Construction Inc. An amount of $2,409,098. This is for the, by phase three, is the state line road to 301 area. So this will complete, or not complete, this will be the next step in the process of the fire extension program that the city has undertaken, undertaken in the last couple of years.
Authorization of the motion?
Authorization for the mayor to sign contracts and take all actions necessary, all actions necessary for the bids.
Second.
We have motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots, and again, just to add to that, just a quick update with the board, this is a long time project, it's been going on for about four years, and this is to, to add larger water pipes for the fire hydrant, to give everyone in the annexed areas in the past the same water protection for fire hydrants as we have throughout the city. And so, I believe this is the last, Dan, this is, this is it, yeah, this is the last phase of it, so we will be complete with that project, and it's a good thing. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda are engineering work authorizations.
Yeah, this is obviously for sibling, this is part of their, it's part of their contract. The next project we have is the Rasco Green Brook Traffic Signalization. This work authorization is in accordance with their master contract, and it'll allow for sibling to oversee, test, do all the testing, overseeing, bidding, and CNI that's associated with the project. So tonight we need authorization for the mayor to sign the work authorization with sibling for the traffic authorization, for the traffic signalization project at Rasco and Green Brook Intersections.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda are term contract renewals.
Yeah, these are the four, our, for our term contracts, we could go reach all, one of them and just do one motion, if that's what the board desires for efficiency, but the first one is the public works and utilities term contract, and that's with TriFirma, this will extend it for an additional year in accordance with the term bid that was previously bid out. The next one is asphalt overlay installation with Landon Roberts, that'll also be extended for an additional year. The next one is asphalt overlay material supply, also with Landon Roberts, which will be extended for an additional year. And then the last one is the pavement striking and markings, that's with Riverside Traffic Systems, and that's being requested to be extended for additional year. There is no CPI increase for the asphalt overlay and asphalt, yeah, overlay installation or asphalt overlay material, but there is CPI increase associated with public works and utilities with TriFirma, and then the also one of the pavement striking, striping and markings with Riverside Traffic Systems. So tonight, request is in accordance with the bid, that was the bid documents, along with their low bids, to allow for the extension of each of these contracts for an additional year. I will note Riverside Traffic Systems was the second bidder, but the other one did not complete, so we moved Riverside Traffic Systems during the autumn, as an alternate last year, so we'll be extending with them for one additional year. So happy to answer any questions on those, but we, to keep these term contracts from expiring, we need authorization tonight to renew them for one additional year.
Should we move?
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution authorizing the city to apply for MDEQ ARPA funds. Nick, would you pull the mic a little closer?
I'm sorry, yeah, sorry. The ARPA funds resolution tonight is authorizing the city to apply for those ARPA funds. As noted earlier, Horn Lake Creek Sewer District will also be applying, but the city, as part of its ARPA funds it received itself, has the authority, or has, can also apply as well for ARPA funds to help leverage some of the projects we're using our ARPA funds for, so that tonight this resolution will authorize the city to apply with, through the state, specifically the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, for those ARPA funds needed or requested on a one-to-one match with certain projects the city has within the, that we'll be using our ARPA funds for as well. So tonight just need authorization for the mayor to sign the resolution along with allowing the city to apply for ARPA funds as, or as requested through MDEQ.
Should we move?
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? And again, like we talked about in our budget workshop, if we do get some of this money, it will allow us to extend our own ARPA funds. In our budget workshop, we laid out a plan for the priorities, how we would spend our money, so some of the projects that are on that list, we're going to send applications in. So if we're able to get more state assistance, then that'll free up some of our money for other uses. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
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 Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for a budget amendment.
Yeah, this budget amendment, resolution for the budget amendment authorizes reporting additional revenue, which was received through grants, and that sales tax, that was money for also then spent on street resurfacing projects, and also allows for the transfer of funds from items that were not used in the COVID department to also be able to use for street resurfacing, so tonight just authorization for this budget amendment to reflect the grants and sales tax received for street resurfacing projects.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yeah.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for the filing of liens pursuant to Mississippi Code 211911.
Yeah, this is just the authorization to file a lien to the, the yards and properties that have been cut. Those will then be converted to assessments on a later date, but tonight just authorization to file liens. So there is notice in the event the property sells, that way the city will get paid for this lien. And in the event that the city, the properties do not sell, those liens will then be converted to assessments in November, December, so the city can collect for the tax assessments that are done to the assets of all.
Should we move?
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for sole source purchase in our Parks Department.
Yeah, this resolution of the Parks Department sole source is for the soccer roads, I mean the state line road soccer complex. It's needed for the retrofit of the lights there to provide more illumination. The sole source provider is Musco Lighting LLC, or Musco Lighting LLC, and the cost is $10,500 for the equipment, $2,500 for the installation, so need authorization tonight for the sole source resolution, and so this project can move forward with the elimination at the state line road soccer complex.
Should we move?
Second.
We have a motion Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve a resolution granting authority to clean private property as presented on the state.
Second.
We have, we have a motion Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of these properties that would like to speak? Hearing, or seeing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Cook.
Yes, sir, we have three items on the agenda tonight. The first one is application for a conditional use permit for a full service spa located at 468 Church Road. This is going to be in the retail center, just on the northwest corner of Church Road and Elmore. Ordinance says two and a half mile radius, we have done a window survey, and it does comply with those distance regulations. It was voted unanimously in favor for a five-year stint by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, I've kind of moved that we approve item number one on the plan.
Second.
On item one, we have a motion Alderman Jerome, and a second Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is again a request for a full service spa conditional use permit located at 1652 Main Street. This one is actually already in existence, they've gone through the formal review and had a previous conditional use permit for a five-year stint, this is renewal of that, so it's a formality at this point. We have checked to make sure there were no code enforcement violations or any other issues that may cause us to step back and look at this and pull the conditional use permit, there was not. So the request and the approval was for another five years for a conditional use permit for the full service spa.
I'll make a motion to approve item two on the agenda.
Second.
On item two, we have a motion Alderman Hoots and a second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Yeller?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our third application is for a conditional use permit for motor vehicle repair and service shop at 9070 Highway 51 North. As it exists now, it was already a motor vehicle repair shop, it was grandfathered in before conditional uses for this were required. We have new ownership, Cook Auto Sales, which is down the street, is requesting to occupy this building to do work on the cars that he's selling on his lot, so storage on this site will not be a contingency because he will be carrying them back and forth to his dealership. He will be doing repairs and cleaning up the site and basically giving it a facelift. Again, it has the roll up doors, it has the storage in the back, it's already been prepared to be a motor vehicle repair shop, so the request and the approval was for a five-year stint for motor vehicle repair.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item three on the agenda.
Second.
On item three, we have a motion Alderman Hoots, a second Alderman Kelly, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hughes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Forrest?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you. Next on our agenda is Ms. Lori Barnes with the First Regional Library, the director.
Hello, Mayor.
Hello.
How are you, Alderman, this great evening, this evening? I'm Lori Barnes, I'm the director of the First Regional Library System, and I have some friends with me here this evening. I have Nita Anderson, who is our business manager, Caroline Barnett, who is the manager of the MR Davis Library, and we have some library friends here with us this evening, so we're so excited to have them. I absolutely must begin by thanking you. Thank you very, very much for the ongoing support that you give the library system and the local MR Davis Library. We could not do what we do without you, and so we want to make sure that you know we appreciate you very, very much. We've had a great year at the library, we were very blessed and fortunate to receive $7,000 in LSTA funds this year, which we use to improve the technology and advancement of the meeting room here at the library here in South Haven. I think the patrons are really enjoying the new technology, and it's really made a big difference in their experience there in using the meeting room. Also, we've had a wonderful summer reading program, no more virtual programs, our children, our adults are back in our libraries as business as usual at the library. I would tell you that we had hundreds of children this summer, but we actually had thousands of children this summer, and we're just thrilled to see them back in the library, using the library, checking out books, and having fun at the library. We've also had really popular programs. South Haven Library in our system is known for its programs, for the strength and quality and variety of its programs, very successful year. Caroline Barnett and her staff have really hit the ball out of the park in trying to establish wonderful array of programs for our local residents, and so it's just been a great year as far as that goes. I did provide you a handout, I wanted you to see where we stand here with the local libraries, towards the library system. If you look on this page right here, first of all, this page, First Regional, is giving you some statistics for the library system. The page where we have MR Davis Public Library at the top, these are some statistics about your local library, and I thought you might find that very interesting to see, that we had over 7,000 people in program attendance for fiscal year '22 thus far, we're not finished with this year, that number's going to continue to grow. We checked out in fiscal year 2021, which is the last year we have completed, we checked out 54,913 items, and we had 48,001 Wi-Fi sessions. Please keep in mind, Wi-Fi service is something that the libraries here in South Haven provides 24 hours a day. You might, we have people that utilize it during the daytime, but you might also see people utilizing it at night because they can kind of tap into the Wi-Fi services in the evening hour, so that's why that number's so huge, it gets a lot of usage. We also work with patrons to help them with their technology needs, that happened over 13,600, well, 1,300, 600, 700 times during this past year, so that's the year we completed. At this time, I'm going to invite Caroline to come forth and give, make a few remarks, she wanted to make a few statements, and then I'm going to wrap up after Caroline finishes. So Caroline, you ready?
I want to echo Lori's thanks, and we did have a terrific summer. We had over 2,900 participants in 57 programs in six weeks, so we're a little, we're a little tired, but it was great, and we were capped by a wonderful retirement ceremony for Natty Moore, many of y'all know her, she's our 20-year veteran of children's services, so a good send-off for her. We had, y'all may have noticed, we had some great new resources from the Mississippi Library Commission, one of which was the poetry walk that we had out. I want to echo Lori's thanks, and we did have a terrific summer. We had over twenty-nine hundred participants in fifty-seven programs in six weeks. So we're a little, we're a little tired, but it was great, and we were capped by a wonderful retirement ceremony for Natty Moore. Many of y'all know her. She's our twenty-year veteran of children's services, so a good send-off for her. We had, you all may have noticed, we had some great new resources from the Mississippi Library Commission, one of which was the poetry walk that we had out around Saucier Park. We've just gotten a new story walk that we'll be putting out tomorrow. Another fun thing that the Mississippi Library Commission did, which they've never done in all the years I've worked in Mississippi, they had inflatable costumes. So we had some inflatable dinosaurs this summer. We were going to have them be part of the Fourth of July parade, but we decided it was a little too hot, and we had quite a few. We had an inflatable Christmas tree, which I wore for Christmas. I do want to give a special shout-out of thanks to Bradley Wallace, to Dylan Brink, and Robbie White, who really take good care of our building and are so responsive. We're looking forward to lots of new partnerships, as well as continued work with our schools, daycare centers, senior facilities, businesses, community centers, and I want y'all to save the date. September twelfth to seventeenth, we'll be celebrating sixty years of library service in South Haven. So we predate the city's incorporation by almost twenty years. Started in nineteen sixty-two, I hear, and maybe some of y'all who have been here longer than I know, I understand that our first facility was some shelves inside the fire station on Highway Fifty-One. I've not seen any pictures to prove that, but I'd like to see some, and we do have a lot to celebrate, and we look forward to celebrating with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just in closing, everyone, we, you know, I wouldn't be being truthful if I didn't tell you that we had, didn't have some, some challenges this year. We have. The cost of operating our libraries has just grown astronomically, unfortunately. We, you know, with gas prices going up, our transportation costs are high, the cost of our materials are going up, the cost of processing is going up, everything is going up, as you all know, anytime you go to the grocery store. Also, another challenge that we have, and I bet you all can relate to this, is hiring people. It's been really a challenge to hire people this year. One of the challenges that we have is that we pay our staff members, our frontline staff members, for example, make ten dollars an hour, and you know that that's not very competitive with all the employers we have here in this area. So it has made for a challenging year for us. Some of the goals that we have for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, I'm just going to mention two of them because we have a lot, but two I did want to point out to you, we plan to start offering free computer classes to residents in this area. We all use computer day in, day out. We may take it for granted, but believe me, there are a lot of people that are residents here in this area who do not have good computer skills, and we feel that not only will this help them with, just improve their own lives, but it will help them with job readiness, and it will help them to be able to become more technologically advanced. So we're looking very forward to providing those free classes. Another thing that we would like to do this year is open the South Haven Library on Sunday afternoons. We get that request all the time, and we would really like to be able to do that. So that's one of our secondary goals that we have for the coming year. In closing, let me, first of all, again, thank you for this time to come before you today. It's great seeing all of you. We are asking you for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. That's a thirty thousand dollar increase in our appropriation for this year, and that's to maintain operations as we are accustomed to, as well as grow with these new goals. So we thank you for that consideration, Mayor. We thank you, Board of Aldermen, and certainly if there's any questions, please feel free to ask me, and I'll do the best I can in answering them. Does anyone have any questions this evening?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Barnes?
Where do we rank as far as, you know, we give you three hundred thousand? Anybody close to that?
Oh, yeah. Um, I would say, let me, I have that right here. Let me find that. We get from, let's see here, Olive Branch, we get three seventy-nine, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The City of Oxford gives us three hundred and forty-seven thousand. And then you guys are third. You guys are third, okay. We get, the City of Batesville gives us, just where I pointed comparison, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred. So, any other questions? Well, thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you figuring this time, and I appreciate all of you, and I gave you a business card. Please feel free to call me anytime you have a question, or if I can help you in any way, I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Okay, next on our agenda is our mayor's report. Just want to update the board on a few things. First of all, sales tax revenue continues to stay on pace for an increase, as we talked about in the budget workshop. We're on pace to exceed eighteen point two million, which is a city record. Again, it's tremendously higher than last year. We've had a tremendous trend. That stays on pace. The tourism tax revenue, pretty much the same thing. It continues to increase each year for the last month. In two thousand twenty, it was a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Twenty-one, it was two fifty. It's two fifty-two this year. And then back up to sales tax, just to give you an idea on the years, in two thousand twenty, it was one million three hundred and thirty-six thousand. In twenty-one, it was one million four hundred and forty-seven thousand. This year, it's one million six hundred thousand. So we continue to have a good trend there. Had our first pro tennis tournament ever in the history of South Haven this week. Had pro tennis players at our tennis complex. A lot of excitement in the city about that. Our tennis program continues to just, just bust at the seams. Y'all know, we've talked about adding some courts. There are tournaments that we can get, national tournaments, if we have, with eight more courts, it'll qualify us to bring in some of those tournaments that we don't qualify for now. So the tennis program has been a tremendous success. Our director, Michael Johnson, is one of the most popular people in South Haven, Mississippi, and DeSoto County. He's a great tennis instructor and a great tennis player himself, so he continues to do a tremendous job promoting our tennis program for adults and kids alike. Rental property ordinance, we talked about that briefly last meeting. Basically, just to summarize, you know, months and months of research and discussion, again, it's my recommendation that we not proceed with a rental property ordinance at this time. The reason is because when we initially started talking about this, we know that in two thousand fifteen, we, we passed the first property maintenance code in the city's history, and that was to control blight and protect our neighborhoods. We also know that not everybody, statistically, non-owner occupied property statistically, has more maintenance issues and crime issues. That is a fact. So that continues to be at the forefront of our concerns. We have the maintenance code that will continue to address that. But when we started getting into the rental property ordinance, you, the problem is, the city can't, you know, we talked about a license, you know, having a license fee, but as Nick has told us, you know, a license fee has to match what the city spends with that fee. Like, you can't go in and just add a fee because you want to discourage an investor, a block investor in California or Illinois, from buying up a bunch of homes in South Haven. You can't do that. And so if you have a license fee that we landed on, would probably fall in the area of about two hundred dollars a house. The bottom line is, that's not going to discourage any block investor. And so the main thing that citizens are concerned about is the inventory problem. So what has happened is these investment companies have come in and bought these huge blocks of rental properties, and so it, especially for first-time home buyers, it has limited, has limited the inventory for people wanting to buy their own home. And so that's, that's the main problem going on. A lot of people, including myself, believe that the market itself will correct this eventually, and I don't know that that's a good thing or a bad thing, because when the market corrects itself, and when these investment companies choose to place their money in other places besides rental houses in cities, it's going to cause the reverse problem. You're going to have a large amount of inventory that's dumped into the market, which is generally going to drive the prices down. But a long way to tell you, I've never recommended an ordinance, and I don't think that we've ever passed an ordinance that we didn't feel like was going to solve a problem. And, you know, could, could this deter in some way? You know, I guess there's some that it would maybe deter from buying properties in South Haven, but I just don't think the, the two main problems, I don't think that, I don't think it touches those. I just don't think you're going to discourage anyone from buying rental houses because you have a two hundred dollar fee, and because you make them sign, sign up on a registry. And then the other thing, as I mentioned, the property maintenance, we already have the property maintenance code that we're using now. So it continues to be a problem for cities throughout the United States, but I think a lot of them have landed where we are. It's just a situation where federal and state housing laws tie to the hands of cities, to the point where when you get to what you can do from the city's standpoint, it's watered down and just doesn't have a lot of teeth. So, again, that's just my recommendation. Y'all on the board, y'all know that we've talked about this. Y'all know the concerns. It is, no one's making light of the problem. It is a major problem in our country for cities, but I just, that's my report to you. So at this point, I'll open the board, I mean, I'll open the floor up for board discussion.
You know, I'd like to see us do something. I mean, I know that's such a big concern, and, and I mean, to me, having the registry, I think, would be a great advantage to us because then we'd know if it is rental property. I mean, you know, we're, we're hiring more code enforcement, we're hiring, you know, another person in the, in the, I was talking like, the, you know.
Building.
Building, no, not building, in, in areas department. You know, so, so that will cover the permits and somebody coming to do it like that. I think we're, you know, we've got a decent infrastructure already in place that we can justify with, with the people we're going to be doing this stuff with. I used, I mean, I know it's a concern with a lot of people, and they've been asking for it for so long. I mean, I think, you know, for us just to not do anything, I, you know, I would much rather see us go ahead and implement it, start working towards it, see how it does. I think it would give us a reporting angle, you know, we know who's where, whenever, which, our codes wasn't going to go out there and then write a ticket, you know, or put a note for high grass, you know, the owners notified then, which is something that doesn't happen now. So maybe, you know, that would, you know, would be, make these people more inclined to go ahead and take better care of the property, the person renting the property, if the owner of the property knows every time that, you know, the notice has been given or something like that. I, I think it would help, and I mean, I did like the way that your report said that we're going to have a two-tier. So, I mean, you know, if someone had one or two houses, like a mom and pop, they wouldn't be near as affected with the higher, you know, cost of the permit, as opposed to some of the ones who have, you know, five, six, or ten properties or more. So that's just my thoughts. I mean, I think, you know, we're this close, you know, I, I'd like to see us do something, but I understand, you know, what you're talking about also, this, you know, we, we've got to take, look at the big picture.
Well, just to clarify, the additional personnel in the clerk's office is not for rental property. This is for, like, what we're doing now, correct, Andrea? So if we did the rental property ordinance, we would definitely need to hire at least one other clerk, and then same thing with the code enforcement officers. The workload that they have now is without a rental property ordinance. So if we were going to have a rental property ordinance, we would definitely need to hire more code enforcement officers as well. But I, I don't disagree. I mean, I think there is some value in the registry. You know, it's doing something, but, you know, I just, the more we comb through it, I just don't think it solves, I don't think it solves the problem. But anyway, mayor's report.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and actually maybe it's for Chief Moore. I'm not sure. Outside of a registry, is, if we're having, if the police department's having repeated calls to a resident, whether it be for domestic issues, whether it be for drug issues, whether it be for just continual issues at maybe one residence or another residence, is there a way to determine outside of a registry if this is a rental property or not?
We have that now. When we did the nuisance property ordinance, that's when we set that up, where we can track who the owners of the property are. And when we pass the nuisance property ordinance, that's what that's for. That way you can track if there's a number of crimes or combination of crimes and code enforcement violations that could put them in violation of the nuisance property ordinance. So we do have that in place now.
Okay. Because in, in the past couple, over the summer since we started discussing the whole possibility of a rental ordinance, I had several investment, you know, property owners who would come to me, and they all, everyone pretty much claimed, you know, swore that they have stringent lease agreements that if there are criminal, you know, ongoings or anything like that in the house, that they have the, you know, right to evict. And so that might be a possibility if we continue to have troubles and solve one of the problems anyway.
Well, and that's one thing that we, over the years, I mean, we, as y'all know, we, we've been talking about this for nine years now. The, the problem is that, that, that's true. What your people are telling you is true. There, there are a lot of landlords in the city that have a strict vetting process, and, and they, they manage their property, they take care of it. The problem is that everyone is not like that. And, and so you have some that are really good, but then you have some that are really, really bad. And we've had some serious crimes committed in rental properties, and that doesn't mean that we don't have them in owner occupied properties too, but a lot of them are situations where there are people that, you know, when you have a non-owner occupied house, a lot of times you, by its nature, you have someone that's transient, you know, they're, they're not built, you know, digging in roots, you know, they're only here for a certain amount of time, and we've had some, just, we've just had problems with that, like with crimes and, and the number of people living in the houses and, and all kinds of things that go with that. So, again, there, we've established that there's no doubt that rental property can be a problem, but, you know, it's just, it's not absolute either, either way.
Right. I'd gotten the impression that the owners would like to know if there was an issue. Now, like I said, that's probably not with every investment company or in every management company, but, you know, this is their property. This is, you know, they, they can't cry in the fact that it's investment property, and if there's a, a bad element there, they'd like to know about it before it becomes a huge issue and they had trouble with it later, you know.
Yeah. But is it our responsibility to notify them, or their responsibility to notify us?
I, I agree with you, but.
It's their investment.
It's their investment.
Yeah.
Right, well, we're.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what you get.
But at the same time, they may not know, you know, if, if there were constant calls at midnight every weekend, you know, I don't know if the, the owner of the property would know that.
We've had situations in the past. This has been when Chief Tom Long was here, but we had a specific area that had so many problems that we actually had a meeting. We had, the, one of the owners flew in from California, and we talked about that, talked about all the crimes, all the calls, and.
Is that the apartment complex or the?
One of them, yeah. And they were very interested, and like you said, they were concerned about it. And so they seemed to be concerned for a short while, and then, you know, nothing really changed. But, but anyway, I just go back to that about, you know, what we've talked about, you know, some of the other cities, some of the other ideas have been tossed around, you know, what it amounts to is almost like a housing department. You know, if you start, if we're the ones that are, like, responsible for tracking everything that goes on with rental houses, you're talking about, you know, adding a, a burden on the city with the number of personnel, almost makes it like a housing department. And I don't know that that's, I, I don't think that would be good for the city, but you're talking about, you could get into a pretty serious workload.
I just want to make this clear. I don't think it's about we're afraid of the workload. We're afraid you're not going to solve the problem. It's just not going to solve the problem.
It, it would be a, and, no, and I agree with you. If we could solve the problem.
Then we would do it.
We can manage that. I mean, we, we've talked about this. Our department heads and I've had numerous conversations. We have a plan. We, we could, we could do it. But, but it goes back to what you just said. It would, it would be adding a lot of work, but we can do it. We'd have to have new people, but we can do it. And then the license fee would fund that, would pay for it. So I believe it could be a budget neutral decision. But again, to me, is what you said too. I, I just don't know that it solves a problem.
Then solve the problem.
I, I think it's, I kind of agree with Charlie. I think we should do something. And, and we might take a, it may take a lot of different things for us to do this. This may be just one of the many things that we do to help solve the problem.
I think we take a longer, a stronger look, or I think we, we take a good look at putting more teeth in the property maintenance code.
I'm good with that.
I don't, a fee's not going to solve the problem. Putting some teeth into the property maintenance code more than we have already in it might be a start in that direction.
I think there's common ground somewhere. Between the two, we can figure something out, but it's, we just haven't got there yet. There's no, there's no easy solution, or everybody will be doing it right now.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a problem across the nation. Nobody's come up with this. I'm not saying we can't, but I mean, I think, I think you start with putting some, some sharper teeth in the property maintenance code.
Well, the ordinance that, that I sent out to all of y'all, that's where we landed. That's after we carved this thing up over and over. Actually, Horn Lake, City of Horn Lake, had a great idea of the, the graded license fee. That came from them. We thought that was a good idea on their part, and that's always been one of the big. That's always been one of the biggest concerns I had, is trying to find a way not to, you know, you don't want to create difficulty for, for the ones that are here and taking care of the property. You know, you want, it's, a lot of times it comes down to absentee ownership, and, but as Nick has told us, you know, you have to be, it can't be despair, like, you got to treat them all the same, so. So that's been one of the other challenges too.
After seeing the ordinance you sent out, I think, you know, I, I like it, I think it's a good first step. I think, you know, you know, I think it gives us a registry, we start knowing...
Where we have registered.
Actually, where, you know, where these spaces are located at, because, you know, we don't really have a clue exactly how many rental houses we have, and so I think there might be a lot more we think. But this would be a good first step, I believe, and I like the way that you, you know, you wrote the ordinance there. I mean, it'll cover the bases to get us started, and, I mean, I'd be, I'd vote in favor today.
Okay. Any other discussion tonight? Do we want to take action tonight, or do we want, do we want to put some more thought into it?
I think we need to think about it. I think we need to talk about it, not think about it. I think we need to sit down and talk about it.
Okay.
But putting, putting forward action without really, well, knowing that it's not going to solve the problem is useless, in my opinion.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll just move on tonight, and then if we could schedule a special workshop, you know, to talk about that, get everybody in the same room, if y'all want to do that.
Thank you for the work you did there.
Yes, sir. All right, so we'll move on. Next thing I want to update everyone on is the street resurfacing schedule. Been spending a lot of time recently. As I told you before, I managed the street schedule myself purposely because it, it is such a big deal for our city. You know, first impressions mean everything, the condition of your streets, not only for a functionality standpoint of having smooth roads to drive on, and to see, you know, little kids riding their bicycle and skateboards on the streets. It, it is extremely important, you know, for, for the aesthetics of our city, you know, for the pride we have in our city and what message we send. So we spend a lot of time doing that. As y'all know, our street budget has been expanded over the years. I was looking back, just two years ago, our budget was like two million, and now it's four point seven. So I commend the board, you know, for helping, or for approving that, the aggressive approach on getting our streets in better condition. We're still not there. We still have streets that are not going to be touched this year, that are bad. It's, I hate it, but we've made an enormous amount of progress. And so each year, next year, I hope that we can bump that from four or seven to at least five, maybe five point two, just depending on how our results are. But good news is, we've got a pretty good priority list. And the message I want to send, you know, to y'all and to all of our citizens, that there's a lot of thought that goes into this. You know, we, I drive the streets myself, I look at them. We, we prioritize them based on the condition of the surface of the street and also the volume. You know, if you have two that have, that are in equal condition, but one of them has a lot more traffic volume, it makes sense that, you know, you're going to hit the one with the highest volume first. So we've been consistent every year in prioritizing them based on those two factors. The good news I want to report, and by the way, this list, as y'all know, is always available. If you ever have questions, want me to send that to you anytime. It is a dynamic list, things change throughout the year. So that's all I ask, is please don't, you know, commit to one year, because there are times when something will happen and we'll have to move one street to the next year. But if they're, we operate on a four-year plan, so if they have been in that four-year plan, they stay on that four-year plan. But the good news is, there are a few that are so bad that I can tell you that they're going to be on the list this year. The first one is Tulahoma, from Goodman to Church Road. That takes an enormous amount of traffic volume with DeSoto Central and Sacred Heart Schools. Obviously, we have other development going on there, we have the multi-use trail. So that, that road condition is in, it's in very bad, bad shape, and I don't know when that was last resurfaced, but that's going to be the most expensive one on our list, and will be the first one. So the other one is Davis Road, same thing there, as traffic has increased on Getwell. Y'all know that Davis Road has been like a, an escape route for Getwell to go the other way back to church. It has an enormous amount of traffic. We've been watching that for several years now. It's been okay, but it continues to get worse, so Davis Road will be touched this year as well. Farmington Drive and Carriage Hills is one of the big, big collector's streets in one of our, you know, original neighborhoods in Alderman Kelly's Ward, and it's been on the list again for a while. The edges of the road are, are sloughing off really bad, it's, it's in horrific condition. And the citizens have been very patient there. We've had to bump that one back a couple of budget years. So we're going to touch Farmington Drive this year, that's going to make a big difference. And then as far as subdivisions, Alderman Hoots, Highlands at North Creek is one that, I mean, it literally has broken my heart to ride through there. I don't know when that subdivision was built, if, I would imagine that they didn't build it with the right subsurface because it's been in horrific condition for a bunch of years. And, but it's expensive, and we've knocked out some of the streets in there, but, but there's still about ten streets that have not been touched in there. They're absolutely brutal, and we're going to get those this year. So Highlands at North Creek, we're going to touch. The other one that's big, and again, it's, it's been one that we've been looking at for a long time. We've had to bump it back, you know, because it's okay, it's been in fair condition for the most part, but has some critical pieces here and there, but like the others, it's continued to deteriorate, and it's Ross Point Farms. Alderman Gallery, you know that we have a lot of homes at Ross Point Farms, and those streets have not been touched since that subdivision was built in, I guess, late, probably late, I think, late nineties when that was built. So those are just some of the big ones that are on there. But anyway, there's many more streets on there, so after we get this finalized, board members just let me know, and I'll send you a copy of that. Any discussion about that on those streets? That's always a, you know, there's nothing like the smell of new asphalt, you know? Somebody gets a new street, and I'm telling you, I'll ride them, like, I'll, I'll look at them, and Dan knows, Dan knows I'm crazy about this, but when I get the report on which ones they do, I like to go check them out, and it's just fun to see little boys and girls out there riding their bike. You know, you can holt tail on a new freshly paved street, and they got their bikes out, having a little party. It's fun, it's one of the funnest things we do. Anyway, just an update on that, any questions about the streets or discussion about that?
For Farmington, are we doing the entire loop around, or just section of it?
Uh, no, all the way from Brandy, from Canterbury all the way back around to Rascal. And it's a big one, it's the, it's the third most expensive one on the list. It's a long street, yeah. Okay, and that's all that I have. Anybody got anything else for me? Any direct questions for me? Okay, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, we approve the personnel docket as presented on this day.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our city attorney's legal update. He's, he's done with that. Next on the agenda is our utility bill adjustment docket.
Mayor, we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, we got a second of Alderman Kelly's, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda, claims docket.
Just have one or two. Mr. Mayor, we approve the claims docket in the amount of two million, two hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and two cents, including the manchance.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Flores, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Yes.
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 That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Hoots. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. The need this evening is potential litigation by the city, economic development within the city, and interdepartmental personnel will know action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
Second.
Got a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, motion carries. The mayor and board will now enter executive session.